Hello and good evening, everybody. This is January 26, 2021. And this informal part of the city council meeting tonight. We have two presentations that we want to do. And so obviously, the first one is an all of us, I think, your week. February 21st, February 21st, Saturday, 2021. And as you guys know, we kind of started, we've been doing it a little bit differently, doing proclamations and recognitions. So starting at five thirty, we'll be out. Kind of save the majority of our T D times for the business of the day. And so we did engineers week proclamation a year ago. And so we just wanted to reiterate that. We got there with some push from Saturday, 2021. We are recognizing and giving a big shout out to all the engineers out there. We do the good thing, make the person. You just said, she can't understand what I'm saying. It doesn't last, people. Well, it's all, okay, let's see if that's better. And so engineers, we begin February 21st to 27th. Kind of have a proclamation for to start. We this, apparently, January 9th is recognized as law enforcement appreciation day. And so we didn't have anything formal on last meeting, but we did mention that we wanted to try to have a proclamation ready to go over tonight's meeting. That's been forward with this as well. So we get a blast on here. Okay, a proclamation declaring that henceforth, January 9th, will be recognized as law enforcement appreciation day. Throughout the city of Fountain honoring the city law enforcement and the work they do. Whereas the public safety of all cotton Colorado residents is important to happiness, prosperity, well being of our families and communities. And whereas we appreciate their extraordinary efforts and sacrifices made by officers and their family members on a daily basis in order to protect their soul, for face and health, as well as for the visitor. Whereas the officers stand as leaders, educating the community about the importance of public safety. And now therefore, City of Fountain proclaims that January 9th. For the law enforcement appreciation day, and we encourage citizens of Fountain. Reach out to law enforcement to say thank you for their dedication and commitment. For our community day of this 26th day of January 21st. And I don't, I can speak for everybody, I guarantee they want to say something as well, but we love our employees. And all the work that they do and our department has accomplished some huge changes over the last, I don't know, 10, 15 years and all for the better, I think. And while we have growing things, we really weathered those storms with the leadership of the current chief, Ever. And not climbing back tonight with us and, you know, leading the charge again and be gone for a bit. You know, that the department's in great hands with all the leadership that were out there. And say, well, we keep the mission going forward. I'm just excited for that group of men and women who do it every day and take care of us. I tell all public safety, this altar there, I would say, was.
If I would sleep as easily and as restful at night. So I appreciate everything you guys do. I don't know if any other council members have anything they'd like to say. Mr. Applegate, go ahead.
Yeah, I just like to say, I think we probably have the best police force anywhere in Colorado. They're, they care, they take care of people. They're not out there just to ride around and give tickets and stuff like some places. They actually care to help everyone, and we really appreciate that.
Yep. I saw, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Yeah, just, sorry, sorry. Well, that leg is killing me. Just kind of echo everything that's been said and also point out that it's, it's pretty much a weekly thing, at least once a week, usually twice or three times. That I have somebody that I'm talking to that gives me a huge compliment on our police force and our firefighters. And the police force that we've got, you know, as Richard said, people can see, they're not just out there. You know, I've been in places where the police force was very antagonistic and our guys are very proactive and positive. And that has made an enormous difference in our community. And especially when we look around and see some of the problems we have for the last couple of years with the way communities and P Ds have interacted or failed to interact. And, and the way our folks approach what they do, I think, makes all the difference. And just cannot say how much I appreciate what they do, both in the realm of law enforcement and in the way they approach it. So appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Ms. Duncan?
Good afternoon, everyone. I echo all the sentiments of everyone that's spoken before me. Again, as Greg said, there's nowhere you can go. I was making preparations for an event yesterday. And someone introduced me as the Council and Fountain. And the, nothing but good compliments about our police force. You know, nowhere you go, that you get compliments, compliments, compliments. And I am so honored and proud to be a part of the City of Fountain and have such awesome representation of our police force. And I am, again, so honored to be a part of.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think you have to turn on.
I would just like to say thank you. As a business owner, for a few years in Fountain, it was absolutely exhausting to try to keep up with everything going on. In the last few years, it's just been so smooth. You know, if you call an officer, they're going to be there. And fortunately, we had to do that again this week, but professional service. And appreciate it very, very much and really caring about, about you as a person and not just taking care of the incident. And yeah, I echo what Dietrich said. Every time you go anywhere, just really, really good things you hear about Fountain and what a leader you are in the community. You and your officers are on boards, caring about the entire community here, not just the City of Fountain. But, you know, sharing your knowledge and wisdom and everything. And I really appreciate that because it, it really, the whole region is benefiting from the leadership we have down here.
Yep. Yep, okay. Mr. Geek, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to comment that I cannot, I've been around law enforcement for about 70 years. Because my dad was a cop and I just want you to know that I am impressed and very glad I live in Fountain right now. And I really appreciate all the work that gets done with the police department and the fire department. Thank you.
All right. All right, I think that's it. So yeah, thank you for that. And again, pass our well wishes on to the men and women over there and thank them for everything. And we look forward to celebrating a little bit better next year and be ready for the night. So thanks a lot. Yeah, all right, great. And so just for everybody's sake, since those are the two things we needed to go through during our informal meeting, what we're going to do now. Because our meeting doesn't start until six, our official meeting. We are going to go on mute and everything will stay on. So if you're an attendee, just sitting in the audience, you'll just sit there and we will be back to start our normal meeting at six o'clock in about 18 minutes. So we'll see you then. All right, good evening, everybody. And we are back and ready for our official meeting of our city council meeting tonight. It is six o'clock, January 26, 2021. I'll call our meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Paul, just cut, you could probably hear that, there's a little bit of delay from those who are online. So, all right, roll call, please, Ms. Huffman, sorry.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lauer.
Here, here.
Councilmember Thompson, here. Councilmember Estes.
Here, here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here, here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here, here.
Seven members present, three virtually.
Okay.
I apologize.
Paul, I'll go ahead and let you, for our attendees, we have, well, let me check our attendees. Yeah, go ahead, there's one, two names there that I don't recognize. So just go over those particulars, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our city council meeting. If you've logged in with the GoToWebinar interface, you should see a tool bar with four buttons. If all you see are just only the four buttons, click the orange arrow to open the entire user interface. All attendees' microphones are muted. There are two ways you can communicate with city council. One is to raise your hand by clicking on the hand button on your vertical menu bar. The other is to type a question into the question pane in the attendee interface. If you're not connected to the web presentation, you will not be able to raise your hand or ask a question. To raise your hand, click on the hand button on your vertical menu attendee bar. When your hand is raised, the arrow will turn from green to red and a member of staff will call on you by the name you registered with and will unmute you. To ask a question in the questions pane, in the attendee pane, type the question to the city council and/or staff members. Staff will read the question out loud and direct it to the appropriate party. If the question pane is not visible on the, or click on the orange arrow to open the attendee pane.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. We're going to go ahead and keep going. And our next items are presentations and board committee commission appointments, which we have none tonight. We'll go straight into city council agenda requests and announcements. And I'll still go in our regular order. So if you're online, just get ready to go. And I will start with Ms. Duncan, go ahead.
Okay, I attended the following in January. The Economic Development Forum hosted by E D C C and the Colorado O E D I T. I attended the Watershed District Meeting, Fountain Master Transportation Plan Stakeholders Meeting. Yesterday, I called in for the legislative discussion, so I guess I need to get update on those. But those are the events that I attended this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Mr. Geek.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Councilman Thomas Thompson for her. Election, I guess, to Vice President of the PPACG. That's it, thank you.
Okay, yeah, just in reference to that, we've been a part of the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments for quite some time. And I think probably since its inception, and we've always had representation. And the greater committee, I guess, best way to put it, council. And we've always sent, you know, council member or two to go be a part of that. And last few years, Ms. Thompson's really worked hard to to kind of make a big voice there for Fountain, and this year is co-chair. And I think probably the first time we've had that high of a, is that right, or am I wrong?
Well, you know, Judy Christian was. I don't know founding, but very active.
That's right, yeah.
ACG when, and so she was a huge voice on that board for a lot of years and really, I think, got it going and kind of set the course. So, yeah, so it's first vice chair.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, yeah, first vice chair, yeah, but anyways, so I wanted to make sure that we gave a shout out because, you know, former Christian had, Christianson had a lot.
Yeah, I forgot all about that. She did a lot of work, but, you know, we. We only get one seat, and Colorado Springs has, I think, thirty-eight seats, and El Paso County has another seventy-two, but, you know, not really. But they, they, they really do outnumber everybody on that board and all the other little communities and counties and things like that that are. I say that with Teller County is involved as well, but there's just a lot of voices, and those two big entities get a bigger voice. And so it's nice that we're, we're again pushing our way in and, and we're a good positive effect to that. So thanks again and congratulations. Okay, Mr. Applegate.
I just want to congratulate and thank the police again for everything with the, what they do. And congratulations, Sharon. That's all.
All right, and then I'm going to move over to Ms. Estes.
Just a big shout out and congratulations to Councilmember Thompson for getting that first vice chair. That is a huge thing for Fountain. And congratulations to Mayor Protem Lauer for being selected as the Secretary of the Fountain Creek Watershed District. Very disappointed that he was not the chair, that at least we have him on the executive board there, and that's all I have.
No, that is good. We need to stay as involved in that as possible. And Mayor Protem, to you.
Well, speaking of the Fountain Creek Watershed District. Yeah, there's, I mean, it was a busy, busy, busy meeting last Friday. There's the annual business meeting where the new board of, or the new. Chair, vice chair, secretary and treasurer were selected. There was a regular monthly meeting, and that included an executive session to discuss some personnel contracts. And then there was the Activity Enterprise Board Meeting. Excuse me, along with their. They kind of broke with custom this year. Normally, the custom is for the vice chair to move up into the, to the chairmanship. And they broke with custom, but it turned out to be for what I'm going to assume is a pretty strategic reason. And that reason is. That district is wanting to bring a ballot initiative this year to the voters, looking for, at the very least, a two mil levy to try to provide sustainable funding for the district. And with Richard Scorman deciding that he would run for another term on Colorado Springs City Council. Strategically, it makes pretty decent sense for the district to have him as the chair, because he has managed to. Shepherd through a couple of ballot initiatives up in the Springs. We're going to very vocal advocate for those things. So if the district is going to go forward with the ballot initiative, then it actually kind of makes some strategic sense to have Richard be the. The new chair for this year. All that said. Bill Banks, as the executive director, is still advocating for our Southmore project as a very high priority project. He's going to be engaging on some grant searches, and then we had a meeting with him. Earlier in the day, Todd and I did, meeting with him earlier in the day to discuss kind of a way forward. And with that. There's a very good possibility, and Todd's doing some behind the scenes work for us, but there's a very good possibility that Bill will have some help seeking out. Grant opportunities that'll work for us, potentially, to get some funding towards that. If we can get a certain level of funding towards that project, then the district has said they would release the other. It ended up being nearly a fifty-fifty split. I think they actually want fifty-one percent, forty-nine percent kind of a deal. And we have, we've got some time this year to sort of fight that and roll that back, if possible. But all that said, with everything good going on with that district. It is, the more I've been thinking about the way Friday's meetings were conducted. I'm going to end up having to consult with the attorney that works for that district. It's entirely possible that the entire afternoon was done illegally, because the person who chaired the meeting was actually no longer a sitting elected official, and I believe the statute and bylaws require a sitting elected official. So it's, for all the good that was done on Friday, it's, it's entirely possible we may have to do it all over again. Soon as we get a determination on that, we'll make. Some determination now in the bad news column for the district. And I don't know that it's horrendously bad news, but. Terry Hart, who's no longer a county commissioner in Pueblo, so he can't be on the. He can't be one of the officers, per se, on the board. He's elected to stay very active as a member of the Citizens Action Group, or the CAG. For the district, which then means he still has a seat at the table. So he'll be continuing to advocate very, very loudly for projects only in Pueblo County. We've been trying to point out that if they're going to go for a ballot initiative. One of the very critical things they're going to need to do is show El Paso County at least one significant win. In terms of funding a project, and we're going to try and leverage that significant win. Into our Southmore project. I'm still a little bit optimistic that we might get that on the approved list and funded. I don't want to be overly pessimistic about it, but I, but I think we're going to have to kind of pull out all the stops in trying to get that accomplished through that district. It's looking more and more like that may be the only mechanism we have to get that taken care of down there. But. I guess we're just going to have to keep pressing forward, and I'm going to do my best. I'm working it out with my employer right now, especially with work at home. It's a little, it's a little more easy for me to participate in every single committee meeting for that district. To keep that project in everybody's mind and see if we can't nudge it a little closer towards a yes. And in the meantime, even though I was not. Made the chair through the customary process, they did pretty happily accept me as the secretary. So the secretary still has somewhat of a voice on the, with the officers and moving that board forward. So I was pretty happy to still, to still have a seat at the slightly, you know, one inch higher table than the regular, than the regular table. But not nearly as cool as Sharon's accomplishment, and congratulations big time on being named, or being selected and, and elected to first, first place chair. That, that's really, really cool. Congratulations on that. And that's all we've got.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Greg. Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, thank you. It seems like the meetings are getting back in full force as far as CML and PPACG and legislative meetings. So I attended several meetings, but the one I would really kind of highlight tonight, rather than going through all of them, is the, the governor's COVID-nineteen Task Force meeting. The governor was not on the call. It was just the people on the COVID-nineteen Task Force, and they were talking about potential changes to the dial. Adding change, shades of color in it, adding another color to it, because, you know, they kept saying, well, we can't live in the red all the time. So that's why we added purple, because it was too stressful for people to live in the red all the time. I get that, but it was very frustrating, because the majority of people were saying to the governor, don't change the dial. Don't cause confusion. It's tough for businesses. You just figure out how the dial works, and you make a change to it, and you add a shade. Nobody's going to understand it. Open up our businesses, let our local health departments. Everybody, only one voice from the state did not say this. These were people in the call from everywhere. About six, I think it was about thirty to forty people. And everybody overwhelmingly was saying, we need local control back. We need it back. Our health departments can handle it. What you need up in Denver, what you need in Grand Junction, even what you need in the different areas of El Paso County is very different. And we need to be able to make decisions based on what is going on in that area. I hope the governor heard it. I hope he listens. Don't have a lot of confidence, and the other thing that concerns me that I was hearing was, you know, we, we went into these dials to. Slow, flatten the curve so that our hospitals didn't get overwhelmed. Now the message is, we're going to stay here, that I was hearing, is we potentially are going to stay in these until a certain percentage of people get vaccinated. We need to stop changing the rules in the game. We need to stop changing it. Local control, let our people figure out what we need to do for our areas, and give the control back to the legislature. And not just the executive branch of the government. So that's pretty much what I was hearing overwhelming at those meetings, and I, I hope he's going to listen, because he didn't really listen when the restaurant rules came out. So please give the power back to our, our local people. So a lot of other meetings, a lot of exciting stuff going on, a lot of bills were introduced at the CML meeting, but since they're not meeting for another month. Probably some changes will be going on with those, so there's not really anything to work on suddenly and worry about too much. So we'll keep pushing for local control, and any time you get a chance in a meeting, you know, please bring it up.
Okay. Thank you, and. We, oh, I guess it's my turn. I don't really have anything for us tonight. I, I actually got on one of those. In December, I think, and it was again just the staff, and they weren't going to move on anything, and it didn't matter what anybody said. So I kind of just said, what's, what's the point of trying to voice our opinion when they're not even going to listen anyway? So it was kind of like they had their mind made up, and whatever they're going to do, you're just going to have to live with it. So I do know that our mayor of the north is. Working very hard, and he has more of a line with the governor than obviously I do. But he, he meets with them pretty regularly and, and is constantly on him about things. And I don't know, he's just, but then I hear he's getting pressure from. All kinds of different organizations up in Denver as well, state level, but I don't know, it's just too confusing. Everything's nuts. There's no rhyme or reason to anything, it really seems like, and, yeah, adding colors, all you're doing is just, you're, I don't. I don't know, it's kind of after the fact, and it's just, it makes no sense, but none of this has. Okay, we'll move on from there, and no announcements or anything. I think we're good. No big things coming up city-wise, so. Public to be heard, item number six, citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. And we ask that you email your questions to the city clerk part of the meeting. At councilmeetings@fountaincolorado.org, or if you're here, we usually have cards in the back, but we didn't put them out tonight. So council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but we're direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. I have, I have four people. Online, and I don't see any hands going up there, so I will just go with our folks in the crowd here. Whoever wants to go first? Go ahead, yep. And so for the folks who are online, you won't see them, because we don't have a camera pointed that way, but you will be able to hear them hopefully, okay? And if one of the council members online, if you are not hearing or whatever, please let us know, and we'll get it fixed as quickly as possible. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lender.
Al Lender, Ariah Road. When I heard the meeting was going to be kind of live, I, I thought everybody was going to be here. But when, explain to me when this thing's going to be normal, when I'm going to have a full council to where I can see? Because I have a lot that I want to say. Recently, I've sent you a couple of messages. I throw them out to city managers and, and whatever. All I want to say is, here we are at the first of the year. I'm glad that I see who I see healthy. Had a lot of crap going on this year. I don't know how much you, we all believe. I, I don't believe very much of it. We had some deaths in the city. Mrs. Paradise. When I heard about that, I was very upset the way I heard it and how that went down. But these people that are gone. We need to remember that.
Yeah.
The start of the new year, I just want to say I'm going to be active. Construction is starting, things are starting to go normal again. The construction up by my house is going to get crazy. I'm already having untold amounts of traffic up there, speeding, trucks, garbage, crashes, you name it. I'm going to be opposing a lot of what's going on this year, and I hope. That the city council kind of supports me, because that little road on Kane Road cannot handle the traffic that you're asking it to take. The trucks that are coming down that road, there's going to be a death pretty soon, because they can't make those corners. There's too much going on. I want you to be aware of it. I'm starting to get angry. I don't want any trouble with my police, because I love them. But I swear, if the traffic continues, they just crash through my fences again. I will put my tractor in the middle of that road, and I'll block that freaking road off. Because one day, someone's going to die at my house. So I just want you all to be aware of what's going on. There's too much traffic. Something has to be done. So if you're going to continue on building these houses the way you are. Please consider my request. I've known a lot of you folks for a long time. I was thinking the other day, Sylvia. Been around now twenty years. And, you know, the story of this building and the city hall. The way it grew. I had the opportunity to take a tour. Of Fountain and things that have been accomplished. I was amazed. I've been so out of it, I haven't been able to keep up with it all, but I am truly amazed. One thing I got to say is I'm proud of you. Proud of these people. This man has put together. An awesome, awesome group of people. I believe that this is the best administration that I have witnessed in my twenty years here. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Al. Yeah, I, I share those exact frustrations with the traffic, and, you know, I, I think Todd and that department, they're working their tail off to. Get a handle on it. It's, it's frustrating for me as well. I live not too far from him, and. Just to see the traffic and how it is these days, it's, that's the biggest fear for me as we move forward, and. Because we're a small town, and we're really ready for that. The good thing is, is we have control as much as we can with it, as long as we can keep them in the city. If they were, if we didn't, you know, allow anymore in the city, they would just go right into the county where there's absolutely no controls. And they would do whatever they wanted, however they wanted, and it wouldn't matter. So I know the county likes to think that they try hard to enforce a lot of those codes, and not codes, but. What's the word I'm looking for? Restrictions and things to, to make it all uniform, and they just don't do it. So we'll, we'll keep pushing away. It's one of those necessary evils, unfortunately, and, and he lets me know about it often, and we'll keep working on it. So, okay, thanks, Mr. Sutter. uh, he lets me know about it often and we'll keep working on it. So, okay, thanks, uh, Mr. Sutter.
Hi.
And then just state your name for the record on that.
Uh, my name is Matthew Sutter. Uh, thank you guys for your time and your commitment to our community. Uh, in twenty twelve, my wife and I purposely moved to Fountain in order to start our family. Uh, I just want you to know that I'm here and we're here because we care about this community. Uh, and I'd just like to discuss the sign that's displayed on seven eight, uh, Santa Fe Avenue. Uh, with Semino Gun Sales Business at the intersection of West Alabama. I've already talked to the business owner and he was not open to a discussion. So I'm here. Uh, the sign reads impeach twenty twenty-one Pito Joe and his hoe. I'm sure many of you seen it. Eighty-five eighty-seven runs directly through Fountain. It is displayed directly across from the middle school next to a ballot drop box on a police station. Uh, this speaks to the amount of publicity that this sign gives to our town due to its location. I I want you to know that this is not about politics. I also want you to understand that I um, know about people's First Amendment rights and I fully believe in them. Uh, the business owner has been displaying his political views for years. And uh, this new sign is different and uncomfortable. And uh, it's even kind of difficult to describe in public right now. Uh, it is obscene, misogynistic and racist. A sign that disgusts pedophilia right next to a middle school and insists a woman of color and power is only there due to the fact that she's engaged in sexual activity to achieve success is very inappropriate. I just think what we have to understand is that this sign is an advertisement for the fiber of our town. It's not a political statement. This is an exclusionary tactic that is nothing new. It is a tactic that was used in Jim Crow South to alert people of color that they were not welcome in certain communities. Uh, I just think we have to work together to have a community of inclusion rather than exclusion. I I have a biracial daughter who is just learning to read and write. She looks out the car window and often asks questions about signs. I will have to explain this sign to her and then justify why I would continue to live here. I'm thankful that she can look up to a professional woman of color because I truly believe that representation matters for her. Uh, the question is, is will she be welcomed in her own community and safe to walk down the street? Uh, in the future, I will have to explain this to my son. How to treat women with respect they deserve. The basic moral character of a man and of a community that would allow this. Uh, I just think that we have to think about what do we want people to see as they drive through our town? When I invite my family here, how do we want to greet newcomers to our community as they look to build in this area? Um, you know, like I I have a lot of shortcomings myself. And uh, I just want you to know that this is a town of good people. And uh, this is a town of uh, inclusion, not exclusion. And uh, the people that we've met in this, in this, in this area are uh, you know, people who do the right thing. People who focus on their families, people who care about their schools, uh, community members that oftentimes have given to myself and to my wife. And uh, so I'm just here because I believe that silence is complicity. And uh, I understand that you guys have uh, certain limitations to uh, you know, whatever. And uh, I'll just end with this. I fully believe that we have to be careful because of our thoughts. Our thoughts of our town become our words. Our words become our actions. Our actions become our habits. And our habits become our character. And then our character becomes who we are. And uh, you know, I just want to say that um, we live in a charged political climate. Uh, I I understand that. Uh, and we want to continue to 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 call this place our home. And uh, we want to continue to call this place our home for um, all race, religions, creeds, uh, sexualities, genders, and uh, you know, like I I I understand all that goes into what you guys have to deal with. And I I I understand our our limitations. And uh, I just felt that I had to come here and um, just say my piece and then go home. So I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank you for all that you guys do for our community. And uh, we are going to try to continue to teach our children to um, exemplify the good things that we want to see in our community. Thank you for your time.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Sutter. I just wanna because I, you know, a lot of people don't realize how difficult it is to come up and speak your mind and and then uh, you know, um, especially when it's overheated topic or things like that. And and I one hundred and eighty percent agree with you and everything that you said. Um, you know, and you know, I, as a teacher, a school teacher myself and and working with kids and and one of the things I always, when we were thinking of rules and we're doing these things and and uh, you, there are things out there that, well, you know, you can bend the rules, you can, you know, push rules to the limits. And and the one thing I always just say is there's always gonna be that one. There's always gonna be that one person who who wants to push it as far as they can and and regardless of um, common decency, common civility, common um, common sense. And uh, in this case, that's exactly one of those things that's really uh, that's merely an attention getting thing and and really what it 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 is, it in, when you really deeply look at it, it's um, not only tasteless, uh, there's no civility involved. Um, and I agree with you a hundred percent. It's it's uh, racist, it's sexist, it's everything you can do, um, all to prove a point that I I'm gonna do it because it's my, it's my First Amendment right. And and so we we've um, went ahead and gone away with uh, common decency in in that aspect. And um, you know, there are people that want to do that and they want to push that button. And and uh, unfortunately for us, we have to explain it to our kids who we want to be good people, want to be good human beings. And 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 I fully agree with you that I think, you know, the the majority of this town and the people I've heard from, uh, you know, uh, they not shrug it off, but at the same time, um, there's there's this feeling of, again, there's always that one person and and then in this case, that's what it is. Um, and I'm sure online, I'm gonna get bashed and they're gonna make some silly little comments about me and things like that on Facebook. And that's fine. That's the right. Um, I'm not immune to that anyway. And uh, um, but uh, you know, there there's a point in time when you just gotta say, really, you know, it's it's a time to grow up and and you may be disappointed with an election, you may be disappointed with what you want to be disappointed with. Um, but there's a good way about going about it and and frankly, there's a a tasteless and 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 a very not tactful way. And you know, that's what this is. And if that's how you want to choose to represent yourself, um, that's fine, but realize that ninety-nine percent of this community doesn't feel that exact same way. And um, you know, I I'm sorry that that uh, we have to have that one that's gonna push those buttons and we have to explain that. But you know what? I think for in me as a teacher and me as having kids, um, it's great to be able to say, um, here's a non example of how you act as a human being. And so um, thank you for speaking up and thank you for um, bringing that forward to us. And uh, you know, it it is his First Amendment right to do what he wants to do there. And he's, he's done other things in the past. And I, you know, I guess it's it's fun for him and it thinks he's proven a point. And and again, uh, that's just, we're we're gonna, we're gonna fight for that First Amendment right as we would for anybody. Um, but again, I think you as a human being, um, you know, you you choose how you want to act. And um, if that's the way you want to do it, I mean, that that is. But again, Mr. Sutter, thank you for coming in and and uh, um, I know you and I had a conversation and was um, beating on you pretty good. And um, it has with me. I've kind of thought about it too. And and this is one of those things that, you know what, we could take a stand and thank you for for speaking up and and being that voice for the rest of the community. Thank you. Um, Mayor Protem, your your uh, mic is on.
Yeah, something, uh, and I really appreciate the gentleman coming, coming in uh, and and speaking like that. Uh, I really do appreciate it. I want to let him know, um, when I hear a statement like silence is complicity. Uh, number one, I agree with that to an extent, but number two, um, there's a whole lot less silence behind the scenes than might be apparent to anybody. It's my understanding that this weekend at church probably ten to twelve different people went up and talked to that gentleman about that sign and asked him to take it down for the exact reasons that you mentioned. It's about the only thing that is going to um, maybe help change the stance on using tasteless or what I would consider personally an abhorrent message is the market force. If he notices his bottom line is suffering because people don't agree with going to this extent with the rhetoric, then that may help change his mind. It's my understanding that the folks that tried to talk to him at church this weekend, uh, were basically told to sit down and be quiet. Uh, you know, he's got the First Amendment right just as much as they do, which is true, and we're all sworn to uh, to uphold that. So we'll, behind the scenes, we'll try to work to persuade him that this is just not the most effective way to do this. And to take that down and 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 maybe just crack through that veneer a little bit. I don't, I don't know if I'm very confident with that, but maybe if there's a a market force that indicates doing something to that degree is just not palatable here any longer. Maybe that'll change the way that works and we'll kind of get through and 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 hope to raise and or elevate the rhetoric a little bit instead of um, kind of sinking to to these levels. Just be aware, um, this is one of those deals where we are really pulled in both directions because we all find that thing distasteful. Uh, my guess is we all find that at the very least distasteful or more more likely even abhorrent, but we've all sworn our oath to go out of our way to protect the First Amendment right that we all share. And uh, that's one of those cases where you're just like, oh, man, the uh, you know, if I, if I go by principle and support the First Amendment, then I gotta find some other way to persuade or I'll see if perhaps the market can can take care and bring some pressure to bear to 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 change that mind. So I guess going on in the future, that's that's what we're gonna see. I'm positive as we've had some businesses scouting the area and they see things like that and we're gonna end up losing businesses. We're gonna end up losing jobs. We're gonna end up losing tax base and that may or may not apply or even come to that gentleman's mind whatsoever, but I I'm I'm just one as as a as a a little libertarian kind of guy who believes in 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 all those constitutional rights, I gotta believe the market forces are gonna come to bear on this one. And uh, we'll just see if that plays out that way. But thanks again for for coming up and and speaking your mind and letting your voice be heard. And I'm sure many other people would agree with you too. So thanks very much.
Okay. Thank you. All right. No. Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
I I really appreciate it. And I think the it is a horrible comment. Um, you know, I think we had a lot of those discussions when we were discussing different kind of signage that would be allowed on businesses. This possibility did come up. But you, like you said, the one bad seed, how do you tell every business they can't have signage on their buildings or something because of that? And it is polit- especially correct polit- protected right now under, because it is considered a political statement. Um, yeah, I think it's horrible. The one thing I really appreciate about the fact that he came in and said is he's gonna teach his kids to do better. Right. Because I think you could talk to every woman that you know. And just about everybody has been called, every female that I've ever talked to, and probably a lot of men, you know, and have different names, but have been called some type of very sexist horrible name. And it just seems to be acceptable to a certain part of society. And the only way it's going to stop is by teaching our children this incorrect and by not getting caught up in in the rhetoric. It is his freedom of speech. You know, we're not gonna take it away. But um, yeah, don't let the market forces bear in it. And that's the way it is. Um, but as someone who's also had some horror, pretty horrible signs put up about me around town during a political season, uh, people seem to think it was pretty funny back then. You know, putting, having your face put in a toilet, having it taken out and having a pig put in its place. Um, we need to really think about what we're doing and how it reflects on our city. And people say they love to come here and they love to live here. Uh, but then in our political season, we think it's okay to put up stuff like that. So maybe this will be a good time for us to think before we have elections in November about how we want our city to be presented as a whole. Um, and 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 keep things really, really civil. Um, because I think it needs to start at home. And and like I said, I really patients to have with your kid. I I had to have them with my kids, you know, and and you have to learn, teach them how to how to let things slide off sometimes. But um, yeah, um, let's, let's just treat each other in general, irregardless of whether we're men or women. Let's teach each other with, treat each other with a lot of respect and think about it.
Republican or Democrat?
I didn't even go down the political side.
Well, I mean, it's the same thing. I mean, that's what it comes down to. And uh, you know, it's it's what it's about. And um, while I'm not a huge fan of um, uh, Vice President Harris, um, I'm not gonna badmouth her because she she got the position legitimately. Um, and it's been proven that it's been legitimate. And you can have all the 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 stuff that's been going on with our country. And um, you know, the the fact of the matter is we're, we are where we are. And you need to grow up and get over it. And let's move on because um, the the bigger mission of our country, of our state, of our little city here is to move forward in a way that our founding fathers, who had very many faults, as if we, if we look at it today, um, you know, but we we grow from those mistakes. We don't um, further dig ourselves into a hole that makes us look like uh, we haven't learned anything. And so that's exactly what this does. And and again, they, you know, uh, yeah, those those signs I remember. And uh, you know, I was um, very much against those two. And I was tied to them because it was all the people running against me. And it's like, you know, I wasn't for those either. I remember a anonymous postcard when I first ran for council and uh, my name came out great on those, but I condemned that immediately. And uh, you know, I was going through some uh, old newspaper clippings and stuff. I can still call them old, but um, you know, the in and uh, you know, I I legitimately get to where I got because of hard work, because my parents um, taught me what it means to um, work for what you do. Um, and and it's unfortunate that we're still in a day and age where we have to deal with stuff like this. It's unfortunate that in a day and age that women who um, are clearly uh, qualified and clearly, you know, the right people for the job are still um, met with stupid things like this. And so um, you know, I agree with everybody tonight. And and you know what? Again, I'm sure and I can put money down on it that there there'll be some mean things said about me too. Go for it. I mean, if that's what makes you sleep at night, do it. Uh, but I could tell you, I sleep at night knowing that I treat my daughters, my mother, my um, all the women in my life and all my friends with dignity and respect. And I'm gonna continue to do that even when we have disagreements. Um, you know, and and I'm gonna move forward with my life knowing that um, God and my parents have taught me better. And so um, we will move on to that from that subject. But thank you, everybody. Um, thank you, Ms. Thompson and and everyone who spoke um, on that issue. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and move on to consent item or uh, item number seven, our consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member or citizen saw requests, in which case um, the item may be removed from the consent agenda, considered separately at the discretion of the council. We have items A, B, C, and D. We'll go with anybody who wants to do anything.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Uh, Mr. Applegate, sir. Oh, there's another. Okay, we have a motion in two seconds. And uh, even for us in here, we're gonna do the call um, verbally. So go ahead, Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. We're gonna move on to item number nine, new business. Um, we just did consent and nothing was removed. So we'll move into nine B, first screening of ordinance number one, seven, five, eight, an ordinance establishing a backflow prevention program by amending section two ninety, customer obligations of chapter thirteen point zero four of title thirteen, utilities code of the Fountain Municipal Code. And Mr. Blankenship, I know you are here as well as uh, Mr. Moore. So who's gonna be talking tonight?
I will, I'll have, I'll start out, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, with that. This is Dan Blankenship, utility director. Uh, the city of Fountain has had a backflow and cross prevention program for many years. Uh, it uh, it was administered under the authority of the state. Um, and the purpose of such a program is to detect the potable water uh, by by fighting uh, or preventing non-chemical substances from
Okay, I just muted him because uh, we'll get him squared away. Is he here? Um, he's at home. Okay. Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it's really distorted on our end. Um, and so that's why I had to put you on mute to to get your attention.
Okay.
Um, it's very, it's really messed up. Uh, we're going to have Paul. I think he's kind of listening to see, is there anything we can do about that, Paul? It's on his end. Okay.
If, 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 is it still bad? Must be.
Okay, um, oh, Troy's here. Well, uh, Dan, I don't know if you want to go ahead and, and maybe try to log out and log back in or something? And then we'll have Troy kind of take it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I can, I can take over if you'd like. Um. Dan and I were working on this one together. Uh, yeah, so this is, this is a, a, an ordinance to establish a, uh, backflow prevention program. Traditionally and historically, we've had, uh, the. The, the backflow rules have been governed by the state of Colorado. And uh. Over the last few years, they've been transitioning over to, to more, uh, local control over the. Backflow, uh, control rules. And so this is a step to kind of codify, uh, and, and establish that program, uh, in our city code. And uh. So this would allow our, uh. Our utility to. Uh. To enforce our, the backflow rules. It's really just to, to, to make, uh, commercial customers for the most part. Um. Is a safety measure to, to make sure they're, they're complying with their rules so that, uh. Um. We don't get backflow water essentially. And so before, we didn't have the tool to enforce it. So if somebody didn't comply with those rules, we couldn't do anything. You know, uh, like we did, like we have with, if somebody doesn't pay their bill, right? We can take steps. Um. To get people to pay their bill, including disconnection. Now, if somebody doesn't comply with these rules, we can take steps, including an up to, um, disconnection of service. So it just protects the, uh, the safety and welfare of our community and our, uh, on our customers. So maybe Dan's back. And if there's any questions, I think Justin's on the phone as well. There's technical questions, but uh, that's all I have.
Okay, and I know Mr. Blankenship's back on. Let's see if, um, it works this time.
Can you, can you hear me okay now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, I think Troy did a good job, uh, probably a little bit more succinct than, than I would be. Uh, but uh, he, he did cover, uh, all the important parts there. Uh, and so, uh, Justin Moore, uh, our water foreman is with us. I, I just do want to say something. Uh, about Justin just real quickly, uh. Uh, but he's here to answer any questions. Justin serves. Uh, in, in a position, a really very responsible position with the city because he is the designated operator in responsible charge of our water system. And, and so it carries a great deal of responsibility. And so he does things, uh, like this, uh, on a routine basis to make sure that we're in compliance. With, uh, or at least our system is in compliance with the state regulations. And so. He is here, uh, to, to address any questions about the, uh. Uh, the proposed, uh, program.
Um. Let me see if there's any questions to start. Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
So I actually took some time today and talked to, um, them about this because I really wanted to make sure. Um, this. Pretty much is in line with what we're doing already because, you know, the last thing we really need to be doing during this, um. Pandemic and extra expenses and businesses really struggling already is to add, um. New regulations or anything on top of this. And this is really not, if you have a backflow in your business already. There is no change to this. The only reason there would be any changes if your backflow valve, uh, failed for some reason. And then you need to repair it just like you would. Um, that said, this is an unfunded mandate coming down from the state. So, um, Troy, in the future, is this something? That if we're going to have to pursue people on this, is this something that we might want to consider having, um. Some type of fee with it for when you have to, when people aren't complying with it. Um, because it's going to take a lot of staff time. And um, if, if someone is choosing not to comply for it, the entire town should not have to. To pay for the time that's going to take you to enforce that. So I'm just throwing that out there. I know I'm not going to handle it today. Um, and uh, but you know, if you get your, if you get it done and it's very simple, you, well, when you can get a plumber there, huh, it should be simple. Get it done and they check it off and they do the paperwork to city. And the only reason, you know, that it's not changing anything. So I want to make sure business owners understand that. Not adding any new rules, new laws. Um, nothing. You just, it's just changing how it's reported and handled. So there's some teeth in it if you're, if you're not taking care of it.
Okay. Waiting to see if anybody else's, lights come on. I don't see anybody else. Okay, uh. Keep talking with the mask on. See no other comments, Dan? I think we're good. We're going to go ahead and, and move forward. I don't have any comments from public either.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll move to council. Uh, Ms. Duncan?
I move to approve ordinance number 1758 on the first reading.
All right. And Ms. Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Um, of ordinance number 1758. Ms. Huffman with the call, please.
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote? Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that, uh, we are going to move on with our, that was our agenda for tonight. Um, item number 10 is correspondence, comments, and ex officia report. So. I'm going to start and go through my list as I usually have it. Uh, Mr. Trainer, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing from me at this time.
Okay, um, let me see. Todd? Mr. Evans?
Nothing from, nothing from me, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Troy, anything?
Uh, nothing else. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, uh, Chief Heber?
No, it's, uh, good to be back and see everybody. Uh, thank you very much for the fine comments. Uh, I will certainly. Uniformly pass them on to the men and women down there. Uh, we have lots of reason to be proud of our public safety department. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, Dan, anything further from, uh, utilities?
Nothing, uh, further, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh. Let me see, Mr. Trilch?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, I have nothing for this evening.
Okay, um, Paul or Lisa, anything from IT that we need to know about?
I have nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, Ms. Huffman?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Wow, okay. I'm going to quickly go through, uh, council. Ms. Duncan?
I would like to say congratulations to Sharon Thompson and Mayor Pro Tem for their new elected positions. Uh, today, um, I watched the city count, the city commissioners meeting. And I echo the sentiments of Commissioner Vandroff is to open our restaurants to a higher capacity. One of the things that we have to keep in mind that this is a ripple effect on our farmers by not having our. Uh, restaurants using. What they produce for us. Also, I would like to emphasize to the residents of Fountain. To get the COVID testing, I've been passing by the testing site and it's empty. So I would encourage everyone to please utilize their site. It is free. And all you, in, in, at this time, um, they take appointments, but with it being no one there, uh, they can register you right on site. So please go and get, and test it. And that's all I have.
Um, Mr. Applegate, or not Mr. Applegate, Mr. Geek, going out of order, I'm sorry.
Nothing from me tonight. Thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I did have my first shot and I would urge everybody to get their shots and don't be worried about it.
All right, thanks for that. Ms. Estes?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem, anything further?
Nothing, nothing further from me. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Just thank you, everybody, for the compliments. But you know, as usual, everything in this city is a team effort. And I would like to send my hats off to Brandy, our city engineer. Who has been the TAC chairman. And let me tell you, the TAC does a ton of work. That's the Technical Advisory Committee for PPACG. And Brandy and that team have worked extremely hard in the last two years to kind of get things a little bit. Squared away and flowing a little bit better. She's just going off as chairman. And I understand the, uh, Manatee Springs is going to have the chairman on that. Engineer is going to have that. But Brandy's done a fantastic job and is always. They're representing for us. And she's, she's fighting hard for us with the traffic situations that are come. We're working on that as a regional level too. And I think we have a lot of respect in this community because. Because Brandy's getting out there and putting herself out there for looking at this as a regional. Regional issue and, and other staff members. So, thank you.
Great. Um, the only other thing I do want to congratulate, we have our, um. Lieutenants at the fire department who have been promoted to battalion chiefs. Is that correct? Uh, captains, I'm sorry. Uh, I get confused with all of them. Uh, but our captains have been promoted to, um, uh, battalion chiefs. And can you remember, I know it was, uh.
Torres, Lynn, Daniels.
Daniels, Lynn, and Torres. So thanks to you guys, um, and all the hard work you guys have been doing for our, our department, our city and, and, uh. Um, just the longevity there and, and those three guys, leadership, everything. I think we're in some really great hands. Thanks, Chief Max, and for, um, you know, forward-thinking all the time. And, and, uh, we, we're, we're really next level with our, with our fire department and. Uh, very excited about our future there as well. So, um, thank you to everybody. Our next regular council meeting will be February 9th. 2021. We are, um, as long as everything's good, we're going to, um, be virtual again and, and look forward to seeing you then. Take care.